Is Hayden starting? Will he start today?
Uh, no, he'll be the, he's the second pitcher on the horse. That's pretty good as a sophomore. Uh, I don't think he'll start the day beginning. Are we ready, Lynn?
Yes, that's trained. Okay, so please draw me in the flagpole. Uh, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all. Question's gonna be late, so I said go ahead and start. Uh, I'm moved that we approved the minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eric Vayner. Mr. Vayner.
He went out the back door with Justin.
Oh, okay.
I think he'll let it come.
Hey, man.
Morning.
Okay, Eric, you're up.
He's honest with you, Chairman. I had to talk to him real quick about this.
Sure, that's fine.
Are you good with the flag?
Already did it, yeah. Morning.
Morning, morning. All right. It started here. It was last week or week before we had a request for an oversized load to be hauled through our community or through our county. I got the paperwork, did get the insurance paperwork. I do not have it attached here, but Mr. Meeks has reviewed it. And, uh... Says that...
Everything good?
Everything's good on the insurance wise.
Yeah, so I'm moving to the third D.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Just to give you a heads up, we did finish capping the C and D or placing the dirt over the C and D at Landfield, so that is done. Had a... Several trees go across the road this last...
Yeah.
Last week, uh, end up having three. And a couple of them appeared to be from where pastures were burnt and they'd end up burning the base of the tree and end up falling in the road, so, um, we got all of them pushed off the side of the road. We just haven't made it back to...
Good, thank you.
To pick them up, but let you know on that. Beth Query, we hope to be crushing the latter part of this week. Doing the final... Final stages of putting everything together. So, that's where we're at there. The asphalt plant, we had the burner on the oil tank quit working, so it's been ordered. City's requested some asphalt for pothole power for patching and, uh, we kept having trouble getting the oil heated up. We finally got it figured out and Matt Brock's helping us get it all put together, so...
Good.
Anyhow, we'll be getting that going. Lay down machine, we got some work we need to do on the lay down machine. The left wing has sprung a little bit, so we're working on getting that all ready to go, so when we're ready to start, everything is up and going. Sixtieth and Grand, western intersection, the, uh, low water crossing finally gave completely away. I think it's been an issue for...
Yeah.
Few years. Um, anyhow, uh, we're gonna head out. I've been visiting with Frank Young on it. I believe there's been conversations and what have you before, and we're gonna temporary get a, another culvert put across here so we can get it opened up to where we can come up with a actual plan of, of what we wanna do there for sure, but, um, definitely wanna get it temporary. And then, uh, also, Commissioner Harris, you may need to help me a little bit on this one. Hundred and fifteenth and Range, just to the north. Do you remember that low water crossing?
No, that bridge over, yeah, that bridge over. It's not low water, it's a, yeah, it is low water.
I think...
It's one where classed...
It's been closed down, I think, for a few years. The farmers are wanting to get...
Okay, that's the one right there.
Yeah, right there on the corner.
Right there. Yes, yes.
Got two low water crossings, one here and one here.
I just noticed one to the north.
One on Range and one on Hundred and Fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
You know which, okay.
You.
It's got barricades. You, I think you can get by on maybe the west side, not the east side, or it's how the barricades have been set. Is there any, have you worked with any...
Frank did a review of that, so I asked him to pull that file for you.
Frank did, okay. That helps me.
Yeah.
Good.
I don't recall what he said, but...
Okay, perfect. Nope, that gives me plenty of background.
It's been a few years, it's been three or four years now.
Been a day or two.
I slept since then.
Absolutely, okay.
But, you know, it's kind of a unique situation, that, right there, and then you've got the other low water crossing right here and a lot of water backs up there, but it's...
Lot of water.
Lot of water, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that helps me with, if Frank's looked at it, we'll, I'll get in touch with him and see what...
Okay.
What he has to say on that. Quick update on windmills. They're still capping our county roads. Um, looks like they're working Fortyth to Fiftieth, Thirty-Nine to Calvary, so then now they're on the south side of, of Thirty-Nine Highway. Um, they took some days off for Easter. They closed down, but I believe they, and I don't have exact, I can look it up if we need it, but it's somewhere around thirteen percent complete on capping of, of the road, so that kinda gives you an idea of where they're at, so...
Have you identified any areas that's gonna have to be repaired or replaced before they go over them, or all just okay? Any, any kind of box culvert or anything?
We, we've had a few that are questionable, um, but I, they're on the, and when I say questionable, questionable on, are they in their, gonna be in their scope, where they're gonna be driving, or are they gonna be just outside of it, something that we need to, to take address and take care of?
No big deal.
I think there's like two or three areas of concern.
Okay.
We did go ahead and put up some, uh, weight limit signs on a couple, um, crossings per engineering...
Good.
Recommendations, um, so... But, all in all, everyone's worked very well together with us, so...
Good.
Communication has been great, so...
It sounds like they've been pretty cooperative with you.
Very, yes. So, I, I do appreciate all the open communication that they've had with us.
Good.
So...
Makes it better, makes it easier.
Yes. Anything for me?
I think I've given you everything that I, that came in by phone for me.
Okay, okay.
I don't have anything.
And I've got, okay.
All right.
And I will work on...
Hay bids.
I think you may be talking later in your time, but I will work and get you some numbers on our meeting the other day that we had.
Oh, okay.
Whenever you talk on that.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, okay?
I'll bring it up under my time, yeah.
Okay. Hay bids.
Hay bids.
I told you that was in the newspaper. Okay. There is your wide oversized load that's coming through your county right there in the center.
Is it still in Lake County?
It's still, yes, yes, so, that, they were waiting to get the permits from us, so... Anyhow.
How long's that been going on now, a month?
I would say every bit of a month, yeah, if not longer.
Have a question for Eric.
For?
For the Lake Biden Board.
Oh, that'll be later. That's okay.
He's not gonna be here, so...
Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, if it has a deal ready, so go ahead.
Yeah, just, um, we're having a meeting on Saturday, the Lake Biden Board.
Okay.
And the group with, you know, the big questions about cleaning up those areas that were trimmed down.
Yep.
So I just wanted to give them an update.
We are, uh, in the process of doing some repair on skid steer so we can, uh, come out with the grapple and we'll finish picking up. We've done some hand chipping or picking up and running through the chipper by hand, but we need to get more, larger equipment than doing it by hand, so... But it's definitely...
Thank you.
In our sight to get something done for you.
Any timeframe on it?
I hope in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
If not quicker. You bet.
So we got hay bids. Uh, this is here for, for Elm Creek. And from Joe Tim.
From who?
Well, it says Joe Tim. Trent?
Ti- Thierry.
Thierry.
That's what they're saying.
Okay, okay. The R and the N is, is, uh, put together.
Okay.
A bid of, uh, three thousand dollars. And this is from Pat Murphy. And this is a bid for twelve hundred.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, Elm Creek hay bid from Joe Cherry for three thousand dollars.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Hey, now I have a, a hay bid for Native Road. This is Pete Wiley. Okay, um... Pete Wiley is fifty-one dollars.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-one dollars.
Fifty-one dollars.
Five-one.
That's what I thought you said, okay.
This is from Pat Murphy. And Pat is three hundred and one dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept the hay bid on the property West Oak Grove Cemetery on Native Road, Pat Murphy for three hundred and one dollars.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Get a mode for you.
There you go, absolutely. Perfect. One thing I did wanna touch on, I forgot to say a while ago, just so everyone knows on our culverts, we've got six pages here that we're, we are behind on the culvert, so we will try and get caught up, but I just want everyone to know that we have forgot about them and we are working on it, so...
They'll keep you busy.
They will, yes, they will.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing, Jeff?
Okay.
Are you coming Saturday?
I think so.
Okay, nine o'clock. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Jerry?
How are you? You have to go live with Tom? Super.
Okay. Susan, for Jay, Justin never wants to do this. Let's break down those dispatch.
Um, Commissioners Chairman, um, Susan is up for the breakdown of the dispatch budget, but basically what happened last week is that I talked to Mr. Farmer, the city attorney, and we discussed the lease agreement with, um, the county and the city with dispatch. At this point, based off that discussion and some, um, hopefully, um, some banter here with regards to the budget issues, um, I've zero leased it or zero payment for the county to receive any funds from the, um, city for using the space. I mean, we're all in the same boat, it's all the same tax dollars, and obviously, I think we're getting some benefit from the budget from dispatch. Obviously, it's, um, there's some 911 dispatch funds involved, however, um, there's also payroll, and payroll is a big part of that budget. And so, we're just trying to make sure we can maintain the cheapest possible, you know, zero in for the, for the city, you know, giving the support that we need for dispatch, which is vital, you know, it's absolutely a necessity, so... I have, I have the, I have the lease. It has been reviewed by Mr. Farmer. He is okay with it legally. Um, it does have, it has two little changes. One from last time is that there's zero rent for ten years and then the city is responsible for their own internet. So utilities and everything else will be...
With the, with the discussion from Susan, uh, yesterday, and, and it's been a discussion more than once, is that the, the 911 funds that we receive can only be used for, for 911 purchases, and that is not payroll, not vehicles, nothing, not rent. It is pretty well limited in scope of what they can pay it for or use it for.
I think the, I think the taxpayers need to know that we're, basically the county is subsidizing, I don't, I hate that word, but that's the only word I know.
Now, let's call it an interlocal agreement.
Well, it's not, it's not really an interlocal agreement. It's actually a fee, a fee that's paid by the county to the city to help with that service, and it's fifty thousand a year.
Well, and that's been fifty thousand dollars for years.
Right. And we're hoping that with this relationship of non-payment of rent, that we can keep that fifty thousand plus the, you know, basically rent free for ten years as part of our contribution to that important part of our community.
Okay.
So I have the lease ready. If you're ready.
Ready. I'd like to make a motion for the county to go on an interlocal agreement with the city of Fort Scott.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, it's, it's just a pure lease.
Contract.
Contract, yeah, it's a lease for...
All right, Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion for the county to enter a contract with the city of Fort Scott regarding the space within the courthouse for the dispatch at zero cost.
Don't hear a second. I second that. Any discussion? And it's also, a motion needs to include my signature.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I'll be delivering this lease to Mr. Farmer this morning after this meeting.
Thank you, Judge.
Sir?
You bet. All righty, where are we at here? Okay, um, mask mandate. Need to discuss the mask mandate. Something transpired between the time that we, we did our, uh, move and, and, uh, this week. Our legislative body has now, uh, passed a bill that, or they, they did not accept the governor's mask mandate, so they've, they've overridden that mandate. So, so to me, I don't know, and this will have to be our county councillor to give me a little guidance on this. And really, with that move, uh, that, that, uh, pretty well reduces the liability risk from the county. Is that a true statement, Justin?
Jason, please be kind. Please be kind on this. Um, this has been a struggle legally, I think, since day one. I mean, we go back to March, you know, fifteenth of two thousand twenty on how and when and where this is, um, enforceable with the mask. So, I still go back to what I've said over a year ago, that the attorney general's opinions, um, with regards to quarantine, I think is right on point. I think that it's enforceable. Mask mandates are hard to be enforced. I mean, I think that based off some of the current data through the CDC, if you have both your shots, there's no travel restriction. They're saying that, you know, the masks at some point really are not part of that process, but we can't, obviously, I'm not advocating for showing of the vaccine card at all, that's not what I'm saying, but the masks do help. I think we've got some data that supports that, but obviously, um, foreseeability is interesting now because you've got a weird world of people that are corne, people that are vaccinated, people that aren't, people that have been exposed, people that have had it, you know, so I don't really know legally where it's gonna look like, you know, two or three years from now. You know, obviously, we do have active ongoing cases in our community. We have people that are currently in the hospital from COVID, so, you know, we have to make sure that we stay vigilant because it's still out there, but, you know, what is, what is it gonna look like ten months from now when the vaccines wear off and we have to go through another round? And, I mean, this is with us forever. This is, uh, this isn't going away, so...
So...
It's a very, it's a very interesting long-term discussion, and I think the things that I've been reading and researching concerning this issue are gonna be ongoing for quite some time.
Years.
Well, I think, I think we're with it. This is with us forever. It's just gonna become part of our lifestyle.
So one of the things that, that, that I checked on yesterday was with the court system, uh, is my understanding that the courts will still require masks, so you will not be able to get on the third floor without mask.
Or, and we've talked about this before, we're, we're, we're unique and within our judicial district. The other two, um, counties that are within our judicial district, they both have freestanding judicial centers, and so that creates an interesting thought process too, because our judicial center's on our third floor, third floor of the county building, you know, where in Link County and Miami County, they actually have separated those, so, you know, in Link County, they could say, "We're not gonna do mass mand, you know, a mass mandate for the county itself, but the judicial center still could be under that mass mandate set forth by the Supreme Court," and that would, that would be easy to enforce. Where here, we say that, and it would be a different enforcement issue because you have the same entry points, the same access points for the general public, so...
And then you have to separate the crowd.
Yeah, and which is, which is fascinating. Man, some of those, that's interesting because they still come through the same, you're still gonna have maybe the same access point, you know, oh, if you open up the entire courthouse, you know, the access points change, and you'd have to actually have someone down here from the court on the first floor to make sure people are coming up with masks, and they are, they are having in-person court hearings, but they're making the masks part of that, so... It all goes back to risk, risk assessment. You know, we, we've talked to our insurance provider, K Camp, on, you know, it's been a while for me, but on multiple occasions about what foreseeability looks like when it comes to masks, and so the legislators have said, "No mask mandate," so, I mean, it comes down to the local level and what you guys are comfortable with, and that's up to the commission. I mean, I, I could tell you all day long, there's risk, and there is risk, by lifting the mask mandate, but it's completely up to you all. I mean, legislators have made that choice.
Do they, by doing that, do they pick up a certain amount of liability?
I, I can't, I, I, with a straight face, I can't answer that question. I mean, I think...
What was that question, Lynn?
With, with the legislative body overriding the governor's mask mandate, does that eliminate some of our, our liability risk? And that's, that's been really the whole premise of this, this. Uh, if, it would've been a different story, would they, if, if in the beginning, they would've said, "Okay, we're, we are doing the mask mandate, uh, and we are assuming the liability," but that did not happen. They put it all back down to the local level on making those decisions.
Were we had any discussion with our health officials at CHC or Health Department?
I don't, I, I am not. I, I think that CHC is in a, I mean, they're, well, CHC, sorry, our local health board is probably in a real tight spot right now, I'm assuming, because we basically, the legislators have done away with the mask mandate, so really, it's up to the local...
And it is.
Local businesses, local governmental entities, local school boards, local community colleges, colleges, whatever, it's up to them. So, it's just a matter of risk, and right now, I mean, you know, we're, we're hoping that we're on the end of, they're talking, you know, they keep talking about the fourth wave, and, I mean, I'm not an expert, I'm just a lawyer. I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to play one either. I'm not a nurse, I'm not a, and that's the other part of this that's always been fascinating, is that none of us really know.
We don't.
I mean, even the experts on some levels have not been right, you know. We had a discussion about taking temperatures, and that was news to me, but now we know that taking temperatures isn't as, quite as important as they thought, and now they're saying hand sanitizer is not as good as they thought it was and not, not needed, and it's, it's in the, it's in the, they're more worried about the ventilation systems than they are the hand sanitizer, so we all went out and hoarded hand sanitizer and became addicted to it. And now we're finding out that that isn't necessarily needed, so, I mean, I don't, legally, this is, legally, this is a conundrum. It is absolutely, I mean, you have to be able to track it, I mean, that's common sense says, you have to find out where your contact point was, you know, when the tracing, did you get it at a restaurant, did you get it at a grocery store, did you get it at, you know, did you go to a funeral and get it there? I mean, track, chasing it back directly to work is difficult. I mean, I, we know that that's possible, but you gotta be able to say for beyond a reasonable doubt that, that they got this here, and that's gonna be tough. Cause it's not like you can, some other, you know, diseases, you can trace back to where you got it from.
Any comment, Cliff, on masks?
So we're discussing the legislators' move on, on, uh, overriding the governor's mask mandate.
Did they do that yesterday or something?
I think so, yeah.
Day or so ago, yeah.
Yeah, I read that.
Friday or something like that, I don't know. I know I got a question as soon as it was done, what, what our position was gonna do, and the other, the other part of the conversation is that the, the third floor will still require a mask at the courts.
Uh, my position is still what the CDC recommends.
Okay.
And what is that? Can you explain that?
My, unless they've changed, Justin is right, they came out and said that, huh, getting it from a surface is, you know, it's a one in ten thousand chance of getting it from a surface. It is an aerosolized, um, virus. As far as I know, the CDC has not lifted a mask, not listed, not lifted masks, and that would be my opinion. I think I said from the beginning, you gotta follow somebody, and my choice is to follow the CDC.
Well, the other part of that is too, how do you, how do you separate the crowds when you have some of them coming in from the, from the third floor, or coming to go to the third floor and others going every other direction?
Yeah. I should ask, we follow the CDC guidelines.
Okay.
Until further notice, make it safe, so...
All right, entertain a motion to continue following the CDC guidelines.
Do we, I mean, do we have to make a motion to do that?
Well, we don't really, because all we have to do is just keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, just not change anything, yeah.
Okay, we're fine.
Okay.
Pretty good. I agree with that.
Looks like you're up again.
Oh, I am, I'm waiting for Justin. This is kinda one of, one of his too. Well, it was not one of his, it was just a suggestion. I did the ra, I did the radio spot again today.
What for?
What?
What for?
What for?
Yeah.
Cause I was voted to, to handle the radio spot.
Oh, the radio spot, okay, time to listen.
Do you ever get the city manager up there?
Huh?
We have a...
Do you ever get the city manager up on the radio?
I don't think you were here. But every Tuesday, we have a...
How about that, Jeremy, next week?
Like it.
Tuesday, Tuesday at, uh...
I'm not sure what time it is.
Seven forty-five.
There you go.
All right. Great. Okay, we're looking at the Citizens Advisory Board.
Can I comment on it real quick?
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Um, I received a phone call from a concerned citizen concerning some advisory boards. I think they are warranted. Um, we had a citizen yesterday contact me that was interested in being a part of a, some type of advisory board for what a shared service between the city and the county would be for an HR director, looking at job descriptions, looking at, you know, policies, things of that nature, so there's another possible advisory board that could be...
Have you got a name?
Set up. Uh, Deb McCoy.
So, so, yeah, I know Mr. Mc, uh, Mark McCoy has, has been really involved with this process from the beginning, so maybe that he could, uh, sit head it up and then, and get, get the, the board together?
I think if the commission is so inclined to make a motion to set up a Citizens Advisory Board and then let Mr. McCoy maybe be the initial, you know, convenor, and then let him go through the process and find areas that, you know, we can have that committee, so, I mean, there's multiple areas. I mean, we, we know we're gonna need one for a road and bridge, we know we're gonna need one for just internal, you know, things with spending, and, you know, even can help with budgets, I mean, it goes on and on. I mean, it's pretty endless where you can have a committee like that, help you guys, you know, do your job functions. We've got that, we've got the guidance, you know, that, actually, the information that Mr. Hoy provided is really good stuff, and we have a, you know, pretty good starting point too that we can use, so... pretty good starting point, too, that we can use. So.
Well, the shared services one would be a real good one for, like I say, Mark to start, and then make sure he gets the people involved that wants to be involved.
Right.
Like Deb.
Yep.
McCoy. What do you guys think?
I'm, I'm fine with them. They don't make the final decision, just make recommendations.
Yeah, their recommendations is all.
I mean, I think there's pros and cons.
Yeah. Will this committee come forward and get some direction from us? So they, they know what we're looking for. And you mentioned shared services twice, but are they also reviewing a full-time position, or is review?
I think, I think they, you know, obviously Commissioner Beth is right on point. They can't, you know, tell you guys what to do. It's mostly a, you know, advisory board. They're going to give their recommendations. You can follow them or not follow them. So you guys can direct that advisory board, as long as you don't get any HIPAA issues or things like that. But, you know, obviously, you can direct them to have them help you on an advisory level for anything.
Because I would, one would like for them to review both sides of it. And the shared services might be the best way. I don't know.
Right.
But I'd like for them to look at shared services as well as a full-time.
Right. And then we got, we got a road issue. That's another one that the advisory board could help us with. And then, you know, communication issues, you know, there's a couple of things that have been brought up over the last seven years now that I think that kind of committee could help with. But shared service is just the one that comes to mind, you know, instantly. But there's other ones that obviously they can help with. Community, you know, Commissioner O'Hare mentioned last week about getting youth involvement. I mean, there's lots of different organizations that help with that, like back around the city. I mean, but having those combined, committees get together, and we had the, I forgot the name of it. Jason may be helping with this, but we had a really good group of people that were involved, trying to, you know, focus on what's best for our community, and opinions for the park.
Youth Activities Team?
That team, too. But there was also like a bigger one over that, that.
Well, you know.
Darcy Smith and.
I'd definitely like to see input from the underprivileged.
Right. But that's, but that's a good committee that could be started with this group.
Especially for the, for the Nats?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Good Neighbor Action. And there was, there was a group that was over all those, community action groups, something like that, that.
Yeah, Visioning.
Visioning. And we haven't met, we haven't met in a long time. Yeah, it was the Visioning Group. So, but that, this committee could help maybe at the county level, help spur conversations that are important. Because we have, we have, you know, with, with the pile of money that's coming soon, there's things that they, I don't think this commission would have time to do, you know, like tennis courts, baseball fields, walking trails. I mean, things that that money could be used for to help the committee, you know, with grant writing through BACO. I mean, there's just a whole bunch of options.
Quality of life issues.
That committee could be part of that, too. So there's five things the committee could do pretty quick. So.
So I'd entertain a motion to have a Citizens Advisory Group for the shared services?
Would it be for shared services or for Mark to explore?
Mark McCoy to be the head of the Shared Services Committee?
Oh, okay.
Well.
What about explore other ideas?
I don't like the word shared services. I mean, it needs to be part of it, but I think it needs to be a little broader than that, because I don't want them focused just on shared services.
Well, it's going to be HR or whatever, because the shared services is going to include all those areas. So one of the directions we'll give them is to look at the HR.
Right. But it's got to be more than just shared services. It's got to be a committee that reviews all aspects of an HR person, or ball diamonds, or task force.
I think those would be different committees.
Well, it's going to be, yeah, there's going to be different issues at different times. We're not going to just tell them to go out and, and do a blanket, look at everything.
I'd like to sit that motion, say, to the commission, or Citizens Advisory Board, for a review of HR services, not just shared services. So.
Oh, we're going to include that in the shared services and HR?
Yeah, HR, shared services.
Okay.
Because that could be a full-time.
So I'll make a motion that we, to give directions to Mr. McCoy to head up a Citizens Advisory Board for, for HR and Shared Services Committee.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And then I would like to, to put on the table, maybe for next week, to, to have a Citizens Advisory Board for Quality of Life, Citizens Advisory Group for another discussion. Where's Mr. Wallace?
Can I go get him?
Wallace?
Yeah, Wallace.
And will we need another committee just for recreation, or?
Well, that should be part of it.
Should be part of it.
Quality of life means all of it.
Should be.
They should be able to handle that one. It's going to have to encompass the whole county.
How you been, Clinton?
Okay. Sorry about this morning. Had a little family deal.
Hey. Quite all right.
Jeremy, how are things at City of Fort Scott?
Good, good. We're, probably give some pieces in place. And, you know, we're moving forward. We've got a new engineer who is going to help us get a lot of our projects off the high ceiling. So we're going to throw everything, everything in the kitchen sink and see if it will be officially our engineer as of tonight.
Yes.
And so once we get that contract signed, they will also be providing public works direction slash administration for us in the interim, very short period of time. Although if you are a week until we can find a suitable replacement for Chad. So, you know, he's also obviously, but part of the tough decision-making that has to happen. But Chad's been, I've enjoyed working with Chad. He's been great. So my assumption is that he doesn't have any hard feelings. He hadn't expressed that to me personally. He's been very professional throughout the whole thing. So.
A good guy.
Thank you very much. But other than that, you know, we're looking forward to getting this dispatch in the right direction. Waiting to hear back kind of from the county on some shared services process. So I'm glad to see that the committee.
You know, I did a radio piece this morning to talk about shared services.
Yeah.
And one of the questions was if we thought it was important to have a good working relationship with the city. And I said, definitely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We're doing the same thing.
And I, and I also, you know, explained to them, shared services is not consolidation.
It is not.
It is far from consolidations. And I made the mention that, that Wyandotte County did some consolidation. We're not down that path at all. Everything is still be separate as far as city and county. You have your commissions, and you have your public works, law enforcement, the whole nine yards is separate.
Yeah, everything is separate.
Now, when it comes to HR issues, that may be a good fit.
Yes, perhaps.
Save the taxpayer money.
But even that would be separate. You know, we wouldn't be privy to the information to happen on your side and by person.
Right. It's all about saving that tax dollar.
Exactly.
Hi, Will.
Hello.
Hey, Will.
Yeah, good to meet you. Okay. Okay. Reason why I'm here is to get signatures, and of course, answer any questions in regards to the county's emergency operations plan, which is, comes up due every five years, and it's an ongoing live, live document. Needless to say, it's not a small read by any chance, but it's something that I continually work on, update, add new things to when the state comes about and says, you know, we have a mapper that shows where all the shelters are, every facility that's out there in regards to the plan. The idea behind the plan is to give us some kind of a base to work from if a major disaster hits, like a Joplin tornado or something of that nature. But what I want to ask this morning is, Lynn and I briefly talked about a little bit, you guys are more than welcome to look at this if you want to, is I need his signature on this paper. And I'll give one, if he'll sign both of them, give one to Kendall. Is to, like I said, ask me any questions about it, you know, do whatever. There's some of the, I'll pass these around. This is kind of the first three pages, Jim, of, kind of explains the whole thing. Like I said, it's, it's due every five years. It was, it was supposed to be done, to be done last year, but because of COVID, they postponed it, and now it's up this year. Would you pass that, Jim? Thank you. So anyway, that's the reason why I'm here. Other people that'll sign that will be people like Lou Howard, who's the president of the LEPC group, and Shane, who is my deputy, he'll sign that as well. Of course, you know, I'll take any questions y'all might have.
So this is a disaster recovery plan, right?
Yeah. It just kind of gives guidance to everyone. We actually had, I had a tabletop exercise in regards to the plan. And I gave the particular departments out to them what their priorities would be, and basic responsibilities, okay, and how everything kind of works, okay. But that's, you know, like I said, this is really taking it to the nth degree when you start looking at this big plan. If we have a small disaster that can be handled quickly, you don't necessarily jump into this big plan. But there's a lot of research that goes on in this. So, anyway, that's it.
No major changes?
Well, you guys' names. Yeah. Anybody, anytime there's an election or anything like that, change names. Departments, District Three, like for instance, took over. The Redfield Fire Department, that's changed. There is what they call an EOP mapper. It's electronic that comes from the state that I have to go into, and that's one of the things they're doing right now, is getting ready to look at that. And I have to go in and move things around in there. If, for instance, rename things, if it was a change or they shut a place down or whatever. And then it involves the whole county. So.
So I entertain a motion to accept the emergency operation plan and sign it.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated county emergency operation plan, which also includes the chairman to sign off on this agreement or plan.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Mr. May.
Makes me nervous. You bring that big book with you.
Sorry?
Makes me nervous you carry that big book with you.
Well, I've got all the answers.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Well, I'm, I'm more curious about what the question is.
Yeah. We don't want those.
How's Tammy doing? How's Tammy?
Oh, she's fine.
Haven't seen her for a while. Yeah, it's hard.
There could be a small string attached to us, but it's nothing, really nothing in particular.
Okay.
Okay, you can take that one.
I have both of them?
Yeah.
That's right. I remember. They kick it back every time that you don't have two, two copies of this original signatures. All right, thanks.
I've got a multitude of things this morning to discuss with the commission. I'm sorry. We will, we will need one, possibly two executive sessions, one for personnel and one for proprietary information concerning some different, it's a tough one. We have to go in. I'll try to explain that when we get there. There's the old landfill site up there. As you're heading north, it's on the right side of the road as you're leaving Fort Scott. The county actually owns that property. I need some permission or have one of the commissioners take the lead on that to find out when the environmental safety plan is over. I mean, that was capped off, I think, in the late 80s, early 90s. And obviously, I'm of the mindset that the county shouldn't really own property that we don't need. You know, obviously, there's, there was a lot of environmental restrictions that was on that land, but we need to maybe start doing our due diligence to see. I know the city owns some land to the south of that. And so that could be a really good parcel for some point to do some economic development with. And so.
I was thinking we had kind of a discussion on that here a couple of years ago about, about that we were checking the wells on that for, and I think I heard at one point or if I remember, that the state gave us permission to stop that, or was that true?
Well, not to my knowledge for the inspections. They were recently inspected, probably last year. I think there's, I think there's six wells there. And one of them might be on city property, but we'd have to review that. But it'd be easy to contact KDHE and see when the inspections do expire.
I thought, I can't remember who I talked to a while back, and I thought they said that it was this year or next.
It could be.
I was kind of thinking it was expiring.
It's just a, it's a really nice piece of property. I mean, it doesn't have highway access, per se, but it's something that, why hold on to something you're not going to use?
Right.
So, I mean, obviously, there's a cap. There's, you know.
We're up to 39 years.
Right. I think, and I think Commissioner Beth's correct. I think it comes off either this year, or it came off last year, it's going to come off in 22.
I was told it was pretty recent. I'm not sure. He told me that.
I'd be more glad to check it out if the commission liked me to. I know those people.
Yeah, we betcha.
Yeah.
Make a motion to allow Mr. Harris to check out the, the old landfill site with KDHE to see what the, the expiration of inspections and, and use, or use of it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next week, we have our comment training at 10:30 till 11:15. After that, I will, I will talk at some length about the multi-county health board contract that's coming up, along with CHC, and hopefully have that presentation ready for you next week. So just kind of giving you a heads up and letting you know where that is. I did talk to Mr. Wallace about a prior piece of property that the county owned. I'm just giving you guys some insight on this, especially for the two new commissioners. This is the land located directly across the street from the landfill to the north. We called it the Hester Property. You know, he was a very nice man, God rest his soul, good guy. But then it has a new owner. We had, we received some correspondence from the state. We're following up on that. And Mr. Wallace says that we'll probably come in and talk to you guys pretty soon about that, too, hopefully by the end of this month. So just letting you know that we're still working on that and trying to figure out what the ins and outs of that is. I do need permission for Commissioner O'Hare to have a meeting with Shane, Susan, Jeremy, who's here today, and Mayor Jones about the possibility of the courthouse being used as a multi-use facility. Obviously, I think it's important to, once again, clarify that this is, just like the dispatch, it's not a shared service. It's a way for taxpayers to see savings, especially at the city level. We're all in the same boat. We're all paying the same taxes. But another thing that's come out of these, these conversations about the city possibly relocating to the county building is the idea of sharing IT services, too. So with that, I would like to have Commissioner O'Hare have the ability to meet with those individuals whenever that meeting can be set up.
Okay. I'll make that motion to approve Chairman O'Hare to meet with Justin and other Okay, I'll make that motion to approve Chairman O'Hare to meet with Justin and other city officials regarding the possibility of the city always moving within the courthouse.
Mr. Harris, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Susan's here in the room, she could probably help us coordinate that meeting, and Jeremy is too, so we can get that done sooner or later. So, we have, Susan is needing some access, I think we're trying to help with the COPS grant, if we can get a motion, and in order to allow Susan to help with that process, any help that Kendall would need with COPS grant to allow her to help with paying, or checking the paperwork is all, you know, all up to speed. I know that sometimes that falls on Kendall and also the commission, but hopefully Susan can get some help.
And they've changed the process, which is quite cumbersome now, so I'll make a motion to allow Susan to access to, to help manage the COPS grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an interesting, well, I need permission from Commissioner O'Hare to meet with representatives from Bedco, from the Bourbon County Healthy Action Team. This would include Mr. Reynolds, myself, a representative from B-Works, a representative from Bedco, a representative from, I think, from the Bourbon County Healthy Action Team, to look at consolidating and dealing with any issues that we have with those different entities. We'd like to do that this week, but I will need a motion to allow for Chairman O'Hare to have that meeting.
I make the motion as said by Justin, our councilor meets.
That'll work, I guess.
I make the motion for Mr., Chairman O'Hare to set up a meeting again with Bedco, Bourbon County Healthy Action, B-Works, who am I missing?
That's your end city and the county.
And the county, this week if possible.
Mr. Harris, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'm going to delegate setting up the meeting to our county health.
I don't want that authority at all.
Nope.
That's, I'll just, I'm not, I just, you guys hired me to do my job functions, so...
Okay, all in favor?
Another thing, and before we go into executive session, I want to have just a conversation from a standpoint of one of the directors contacted me and discussed our pay scale. We do know that we are in 2015 pay levels, this is a very difficult conversation because it has a lot of moving parts, you know, our budgets are built around a zero sum, you know, there is no percentage holdover, you know, our budgets are, all of the budgets that I've seen have always had, you know, three, five, two, zero at the end of the year. And so to give the ability to become maybe possibly competitive in the marketplace with salaries or hourly rates, you have to change how the budget process works. And so, you know, a really good example, I'm just going to, I'm going to round numbers down and up so that we don't have to talk sense, but, you know, let's say that our standard pay for a person who's an administrative assistant is $12 an hour, and the standard pay in the general community is $18 to $17 an hour, it's going to be very difficult to find qualified people. We have one of our departments that's currently, has two openings, they literally received two applicants, and one of those applicants, once they found out what the pay scale was, is unable to take a job here. So, it's interesting to think about, you know, what the market looks like, you know, we've talked about this before, we have two companies in town that are in that $18 to $17 range, and then we, literally 20 miles from here, we've got a pretty standard rate of pay of around $16 to $17 an hour. So, you know, finding qualified people is difficult during these times, but then on top of the lower pay scale that we have, it's becoming even more difficult to find qualified people to fill positions. So, I'm just bringing it up because it is, it is concern, we have two separate directors that have now talked to me about that issue, I know this is an HR function, but it also is something we got to talk about.
It's quite a conversation, because we are behind the pay scale, you know, we all know that, we tackle this every year. The other side of that is just, just a mere dollar an hour raise for our employees is going to be about $200,000.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's going to be a budget issue, and there's going to have to be some give and take on how we, how we approach it, because, you know, we hear just constantly that we don't want our taxes to go up.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, we're going to have to figure out how we can do, do that.
Well, let's, and let's just briefly mention that, with the legislative cap, the taxes with regards to salaries can't go up, I mean, unless you, unless you put it up to the voters and let them do that, and I don't think that is really...
Well, true.
But, so, I mean, I think, I think, you know, safety is one of the things you can bring salaries up for, but it's not something that's, you can't really bring that in as a salary issue, I mean, maybe you could with the sheriff and maybe the county attorney's office and corrections, but that'd be a tough sell, I mean, I don't think...
But, you know, you're looking, you're looking at the appraiser's office, they can't, can't get qualified people because of our pay scale.
Right.
You know, and it's going to start getting difficult to get operators at public works, because we battle that all the time.
Yeah, Jim, I think...
So, how do you, how do you do that? But, you know, you're looking at, like I say, it's going to have to be a give and take, are you, are we going to get qualified people, is there places we can cut to make sure that we can get these qualified people?
Right.
And, and we are constrained by legislative process of raising our budgets, we can't raise the mill.
Right.
Except for by the cost of living.
Right, well, and the valuation is an interesting, I mean, this is a really global thing, but the valuation is also an interesting concept with the mill, I mean, the valuation goes up, you do have more spending authority, but...
You do.
With Susan in the loop, and being really up to speed now with how our budget systems works, I mean, I think it would be good for her to maybe sit down with the directors and say, hey, where is this give and take at? Where can you find ways to save in your budget to give maybe a better pay scale?
I think another question would be, what services are the public willing to give up?
That is a great, that is, that's been...
I mean, it's, there's the, there's the...
That is the question.
That's the devil in the room, nobody wants to talk about.
Yeah.
Everybody, I mean, I'll be, I'll be the bad guy. Everybody wants their road paved, everybody wants their road gravelled.
I don't want to see you go down. Yeah, I've been working, I've been staying out.
Well, you know... So, these services cost money.
Yeah.
You know, and so, the question, I mean, I, I mean, I'll be the punching bag.
Right.
I'm fine with that, but everybody wants their road gravelled, everybody wants their road paved, everybody wants their ditches mowed, everybody wants the cop, you know, Sheriff Martin to show up in five minutes, or two minutes, or 30 seconds. A lot more services that we provide, or the county provides, but the question is, all of those services cost money.
Yep.
And everything today, no different than my bills have gone up in the last year, is no different than everybody else's. So, the question is, is the public willing to give up some of those services? I don't know that.
And I, I think that is a great point, I think even, you know, three commissions ago, that was a, you know, when Commissioner O'Hare started, there was a question that has always stuck in the back of my mind, is what is the county's function? What is the county's primary job, you know, job role? And that's what Commissioner Beth is talking about, and we've talked about looking at making low maintenance roads, you know, it's, it's a tough decision because somebody's going to have a low maintenance road, or what 40 miles, or 30 miles, or 20 miles of paved roads do you convert back to gravel? I mean, that's, that is a really hard conversation to have, that's, but at some point, it's a, it's a matter of what services you want to have, and what are taxpayers willing to pay for to have in place, so...
Well, like, like, like...
Perfect thing for a committee.
Like they say, because, because of our economic situation in Bourbon County, we rate right at the top at, at the, at the hard property taxes.
I, I think, I saw an article where Kansas now is number 11 in the, in the country per, per capita for taxes, you know, I haven't, I haven't analyzed, I've been collecting data, you guys informed me last week that we want to, I've been collecting that data, and that's where that article came from, but, you know, obviously, we have a lot of things to look at, data-wise, to help with decisions, but a lot of it is, what Commissioner Beth said, is the actual boots on the ground, you know, do we have an hour wait to get your tags, do we, you know, have appointments for the registered deeds office? I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying these are suggestions, I'm just saying that there is a cost benefit analysis where things get taken away, and...
But you, you look at the other side of that with some of our organizations, or some of our groups, is that we have cut staff, you know, over the years, we have done more with less, and like, like I say, is it something that, that going forward, we really need to take a look at, like Clifton says, you know, what are we willing to get rid of if, if they don't, if we can't afford to continue with raising wages and providing services?
I think, I think on some levels, we've seen this, especially in a couple of our departments, you know, you have a high, high rate of turnover.
We do.
And so, because, and I think a lot of that might be the pay scale, I mean, some of it's just going to be, it's not the right fit for the employee, but, you know, it costs money to train a person.
Yep.
And so there's that built-in cost too, that we have to take into consideration, and it's tough at some points because you go out and literally $3 more an hour to do the same job function is, you can't blame the employee for leaving for that.
Yeah.
You just can't.
No, because for instance, Allen County, operators $5 more an hour than ours.
Right.
Can't blame the employee.
Right, but then it gets really interesting with the data, because you're also seeing where Allen County's valuation is, they're, they're really fortunate, they got an oil line, or a gas line that runs through their county, and, I mean, they're $40 million more in valuation. And our valuation's going up, but also, we want to make sure that people aren't, in my opinion again, you know, if we can lower the mills, that's a benefit to our community and our county, so, it's a real interesting problem.
It is, and Clifton's 100% right, I mean, what does the public want to give up? Because, I mean, if the service cost is going up, we need to give pay increases, and it continues on, but there's only so many dollars, so we might have to change our operating plan.
Well, I, I said this before to the two new commissioners, this, this commission has some really tough decisions to make.
Well, we have, our two, our two most employee-heavy groups make up the biggest percentage of our, our workforce, are the ones that are, are, ones that have high turnovers.
Hmm.
Well, and, and, you put the appraiser in there too.
Right, well, if inflation, if inflation goes up, which there's a possibility of that, the cost of doing business goes up, and you still have, what's, what's interesting, I think Susan's been really good about articulating this, is that you still have the same dollar, you can't generate more money by going out and selling more widgets, or dropping the cost of doing business down to make up the difference, you are literally having your hands tied with what, what monies you have, so...
Yep.
And that's where it goes to Commissioner Beth, is you have to cut those services, so, just something that's come, that's come up and brought to my attention, our pay scale is not competitive, which you guys already knew, but I was just reminding you. I don't know which KSA, can I see your sheet real quick? I think I have one, actually, I've got one, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Let's see here. Commissioners, I ask to go into executive session for 10 minutes under KSA 75-4319B4 to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of a corporation, partnership, trust, and individual proprietorships. We have a non-disclosure with this corporation that we are unable to discuss anything concerning this corporation in open session, so they made us sign the non-disclosure.
Turn back to this room. At 10:13, fire a motion.
There will be, there will hopefully be action when we come out.
So moved. Mr. Harris, second?
We probably don't need quite 10 minutes, I'd go seven.
Will you be doing another one after this?
One more for one.
I'll second that.
Second, we'll be back at 10:13.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I do this, I...
7:00.
Okay. Again, I'm going to go to executive session and return to this room at 10:10. I move that we resume our regular scheduled commission meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motions from coming out of executive session.
I'd make a motion to allow Counselor Meeks to, two different motions, but the first one will be to allow negotiations on two lots for a value of less than $10,000 on each for parking.
Here. Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd make another motion to allow Shane Walker to discuss lease agreements in the.
I called the old SRS building.
The old SRS building.
You know, we've never really given that an official name.
No, the old SRS building.
The old SRS building, to discuss.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I want to clarify something from that executive session. The proprietary information that was discussed is, part of that proprietary information is acquiring additional parking space. So, I mean, we had to have that discussion in executive session to maybe, maybe have that possible thing happen, so. And we'll be able to talk about it in open session once the lease is signed.
Okay. I didn't, I wasn't paying attention. I was looking at this bill. What was that?
I was just making sure that, you know, we'll be able to talk about, hopefully, this topic in open session once the lease is signed and we get permission to waive the nondisclosure.
You bet. I was, I was looking at this $15,000 bill.
Yeah, well, that, I don't look forward to your discussion point. I need one more executive session. I asked that the three commissioners, myself and Susan, come in for non-elected identifiable individuals. I don't know, I think it's B2, maybe?
B1.
B1, thank you. Under KSA 75-4319B1, the identifiable information we're talking about is two employees with a medical issue, actually, four employees with multiple medical issues, and then we're also talking about someone's work against evaluation, ability to function and their job function.
Oh.
Probably another seven minutes.
Okay. So, I make a motion. Return back here to this room by 10:20?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's the first flack.
The first what?
You mean, I have to put a mask on even if they voted it down and I don't have to wear it anymore? As far as I know.
Yeah, they, yeah. That's what they, that's what they did this morning.
Oh.
They're sticking with masks.
Still on their first one or they go their second one?
Second.
Second.
First now.
How long will this one last?
Seven, 10:20.
Okay. Good. Did they set a standard, like, for how long or what percentage or, on the mask thing?
Oh, they just, no, they just voted to continue to require masks.
Yep, what you're doing now, no change.
CDC guidelines.
All right.
Is everybody being encouraged to give their vaccination? That's the most helpful thing.
I read yesterday there was a, a baseball game, the Texas Rangers baseball game was the first full capacity sporting event in a year.
It's down to here.
They showed pictures, too, because they weren't spaced out. They were just, they were fast.
That's amazing.
Is that on there, David?
10:20.
10:20?
10:20.
Oh, 10:20.
Back in, back here at 10:20.
Gotcha.
Good.
So, two minutes.
Wow. So, was it pretty amazing, huh, looking?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because it looked strange.
That's what? Well, we'll see how that goes, huh?
Not saying little clumps of people, you know, spread out.
We'll see how that goes for them, huh? The numbers will tell.
I mean, you know, I mean, we're at the point where, you know, the vaccination number were going up and.
Yep, and the people that have had it have gone up, you know, the numbers, you know, when you look at the numbers of people who've been exposed and have had it.
And now when, I guess. A lot of people think that, that may return the page too quick.
Well, I think people need to make their choices. I know for me, you know, and my vaccination, I, you know, do my two weeks. They don't, really don't know how long the immunity's going to last, you know? They only know as long as we have it, we have the vaccine. So, you know, say, you know, it's going to be done in nine months. We don't know. It may be for the entire year, maybe longer than that. We really don't know.
Yeah, I've heard it's going to be required every year, you know, like.
Or available, yeah.
Like a flu shot.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep. Available. They really don't know. It's all the research is.
It seems like, it seems like that's what this whole thing has been about, too, is choice. You want your choices. That's what this whole, kind of comes down to, is opinion and choice.
Uh-huh. Yep. Choice and what risk you're willing to take and, and, um, I just keep encouraging people, we get the vaccine, it's available now, go to kansasvaccine.gov and.
Did you get, did you, have you had both?
Yes, I had the.
Shots?
Moderna, yes.
No issues?
Um, just sore arm and then just a little bit of fatigue. Just feel like, oh, I just don't want to do much.
That was handy, that was handy on her second shot. She's, yeah, other than a sore arm, you know.
Did her knee hit it? Did she get it?
Um, gosh, you know, I think she took him out there when they had.
At the, at the first one?
First building, you know, and they ended up waiting so long and they just left.
Oh, darn.
But, you know, that was a month ago, so.
Sure. I hope she's gotten it by now, you know.
So, that, it was, that was the plan, I think, I think they did.
Yeah, good.
She just said that she had a sore arm, you know, I've heard people say, talk about how they've had issues with the second shot, getting febrile and.
Yeah, some people did. You know, Carrie, Carrie got just a, just a low grade fever for the school district. They, they did the second shot on Friday. It sort of been happening.
Yeah, it was just a jump start.
Yeah.
Just one shot.
Yeah, just one shot.
I usually try to do at least one game a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Well, you're one minute late.
Well, it took us a minute to walk down.
Oh, okay.
So, we're back in session at 10:20 with a minute to walk down the hall, return to this room.
Do you have to make a motion?
We're going to resume our regular meeting. I make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any decisions? Think you have to say that, don't you?
We're going to make some action here.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion to allow Susan Bancroft to discuss IT issues?
What's that?
Who said, I can't hear you.
Yeah, IT, IT issues with possible shared services.
With possible shared services with Shane and the city.
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Were you behind, Mr. Counselor?
I'm, I'm more than, I'm more than I want to comment.
Yeah.
I don't push the hair.
Okay, public comment. Nancy, you got anything?
Hi, my name's Nancy Vanant, and I'm chair of the Lake Advisory Board, and I just have some other concerns. I'm also a retired nurse. I'm volunteering with the Red Cross, so I do a lot of different things in the community. I want to thank you for continuing the mask mandate requirement for this county, for the county courthouse. I think that's a good way to go. I think the main thing we need to do is continue to encourage people to get a vaccination. And the best way to do that, if you haven't had it already, is to go to kansasvaccine.gov, and that'll direct you right to where they're located. You can get your appointments made. It directs you to where you can go. And I think it's great for the Citizens Advisory Board to have that get started, so I thank you very much for that. That's a very positive step. I would like to have an update on the Lake Sewer District Number Three, if someone could provide that for me. And then I have a couple more comments.
Because we've had a transition in attorneys, we, I have a meeting with Mr. Farmer this week, and we're hoping to wrap that up. So, we're, we're further along than what it seems, but, once he gets pulled into the loop, and since he did that original contract, it'll go a little bit smoother.
I love that St. Martin's.
St. Martin's, we have squared up with them as well. He's also working on an agreement with them. We actually are able to meter their lift station, so we know exactly what's going through the lift station, so that's how we'll charge them.
Thank you.
And another big conversation that I know has been happening since I've been coming to meetings, and Lynn, you've been very much involved with economic development and keeping, you know, really keeping the vision on keeping our mill levy, keeping it down. Decreasing it would be great. So, I really appreciate the discussion about how to save money because our taxes are very high. We did have discussions, was it one or two years ago, about the effective tax rate? I think that's a nice, a very good conversation to kind of revisit. It's a lot to learn, but we do need to keep our, our eye on that prize to keep, if you're going to keep people in this community, you got to keep our taxes down. We can't be keeping to go up. I know the 40, is that 42 million from the pilot for this, for the wind generators that we're supposed to be getting? Is it every year? And if that's the case, then that's one way to help keep our mill levy down, to decrease it, actually.
Clarify, it wasn't 40. We're getting around $386,000 per year for the.
300, $386,000 per year?
Year.
Okay. Well, that's not 42 million.
I wish it was 42.
Yeah, I wish it was, too.
I think somebody put out there.
Half our bills would be like.
Yeah, I think somebody put out there a total of like $27 million over, over the life of the, of the program, but ours is 10 years.
10 years.
And then the tax rate kicks in for the, for the wind generators, which will probably net, net more revenue than the 380-some thousand that we're getting a year.
Right, okay, good. Well, just, you know, keeping that in mind, and Lynn, you're on the Economic Development Board, so that's important that we continue to really push for that. And just to let you know that Will Wallace is doing a great job with our emergency management. He's very well-respected across the state and across the nation, and Red Cross works with him very closely when we have the need, so he's been very helpful. Any questions for me? Be back.
Thanks, Nancy.
All right, thanks, guys.
Oh, hey, look at here.
I was asked by Jeremy, he had to leave, just to let the community know that Senator Moran was here at Lab Conco. He's going to be there till 10:45 today, so.
Where's that going to be?
At Lab Conco, so.
Is that out of the.
It's kind of out by the industrial park. Yeah, he'll be out the door before we get there.
Yeah, he will.
I have two or three little items. First, I'd like to report, I met with the, as a citizen, with the chief of police, the mayor, and the city manager, and they are interested going forward with another SRO, RSO officer here for Fort Scott. They're doing the research, and they're going to get with Susan, when she got back from vacation, and talk about maybe another cops grant, possibly. We also discussed the, as a grandparent here again, possibility of two diamonds out to Roach Park, one to the north and one to the south. City's very interested in that. The city manager's going to meet with the superintendent this week to discuss that, and Mr. LaRoche should be back in town this week or next week, and we're going to have a group meeting again. Shane's involved, Josh Riggins involved, so going forward, trying to improve our quality of life here. It's a dream right now, but it can happen if we all do it, so.
And I think Bette goes involved in that, too.
Yeah.
Right, right there.
Last thing I have, Eric Bailey, Public Works Director, myself, as you're aware, we met with TNC Wildlife this week. They have requested numbers to pave for an asphalt road in front of their facility. Eric's working on those numbers, and I made it clear to them that this commission would have to approve that if we move forward. They want asphalt road in front of their nice facility down there, and they're willing to pay 100%. So, but 100% is good today, but, you know, you've got 10 years now, you've got, you've got a lot of maintenance. But anyway, that's going to come forward for our review, so.
So, you know how big a stretch we're looking at? You know, how long, how many miles?
One mile.
One mile.
Possibly, and they see the cost, they might shorten it up. They really want it right in front of their lodges and cabins and stuff, which are really more closer to half mile, probably, so. Well, that's something we can review and probably have to include some future maintenance plans, so. That's all I have.
Cool. How about, you got anything?
Nope.
Nope? Well, I do.
Okay.
The, or one little, nice little cold snap in February, we may want to look at this in the future on, on the direction we want to go with our gas services. That month cost us a total of $30,000 in two locations.
Yeah, terrible.
That's pretty, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I know that the city in town went through the same thing, along with some other communities, so these, these organizations are passing that on of the cost of gas for, for how much we use during that cold snap.
You said two locations or like, you mean county?
Well, it'd be the courthouse and, and I, and I think that the Public Works is including in the courthouse.
Jail.
The jail?
Jail and, jail and.
So, those two, okay.
Yep. So, that's something we may want to consider later on.
Is how to be more energy efficient?
We'll talk about contracts. I really don't have a lot, anything else. I know that. I really don't have a lot of anything else. I know that, like I said, I did a radio spot this morning to try to do some clarification on our shared services and our co-location. There was a misconception that we were doing consolidation, and we are not doing consolidation, not in the least. Everything will still be separate. The only thing that will not be separate if we move down this path is the location will be both in the courthouse. It saves money in the long run for utilities and maintaining another building, and that other building can be put in to... for commercial use or whatever, and so it's going to be a savings to the taxpayers. Plus, it'll be a one-stop shop.
Yeah. One other thing, Lynn, once we get this Advisory Board put together and following up on what Commissioner Bass said as far as what service do they really want, and we get some advice from that board, then I think we should have some town hall meetings to discuss with the general public. If you want motor grader in front of your house this many times, that's what it's going to cost. If you can live with it once every so often, it's going to cost you this. The only way we can reduce taxes, of course, is effective spending, reduce services, and we can do that. It's just up to the public what they want.
Or there's a third, increase the valuation.
Or increase the valuation, yes.
Yeah.
You know, and just looking at that from Jim's standpoint was, in his tenure, they reduced the greater district by one.
Yeah, we have.
Back in it. And, you know, again, if you look at Jim's organization when we first started this, six, seven years ago, he got his... six years ago, his budget reduced $400,000, so, you know, and it's never been or never been brought back up to that level.
Yeah.
So, we have been trying to reduce expenses, but, you know, to keep the level of services we have now, and if we want to increase pay, it's going... we're going to have to have some give and take.
And we currently have seven motor grader operators. We might have to go to four and pay them more money.
Of course, you know...
Bigger areas, but...
Of course, you know, Jim, on the other side of that, how many times have we got... have you and I had reports of, well, I haven't seen a motor grader in front of my house for six months?
And you walk in there, look at a map, and it was there three days ago, but... Yeah. So, one lady, bless her heart, it's been two years, because she says, I haven't seen a motor grader in 28 years, and you know better than that, but she was serious, so sometimes people's perception is just not correct, so... Anyway, we get a lot of work out of us.
We did.
For the budget.
The other thing that I have, and this will be real short, quick, Susan and I was going to meet together. I've got to finish a S and P report for our sewer district bond refinance and try to get that done today. I just got it last week, and so we'll get it finished up.
Good.
That's all I have. Anything else, gentlemen?
I'm good.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Here, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wow.
Thank you, Ben.
You know, we've done a lot in a short period of time.
Oh, yeah. We don't waste a lot of time.